Hi everybody. Welcome back to everyone who watched Session 1. And if this is your first visit, Graham and I are really pleased that you have joined us. We've got some very helpful feedback from the first session, and thank you for your words of support and encouragement. In a few minutes, I will show you how it all works. But first, let me get a reminder of what the course is all about, from Reverend Shelton himself. And before you ask, I am very sorry, but we still don't know what's happened to his right arm.
The goal of this study is to begin to bring the story of God to life for you, so that you might find the soul-level joy and satisfaction that will make you grip this book tightly and wear out its pages as you are changed by its story.
So as Graham said in Session 1, it's going to be different. No welcome, no hugs, no handshakes, no coffee and no supper, no discussion. Instead, consideration and thinking, or if you're with someone, then why not discuss it and talk about it together? We will play music at certain times to give you time to think about what we have discussed. The course is structured around six themes: Word of God, Presence of God, People of God, Redemption, Holiness, and Mission. Last time, we looked at the Word of God. And today, we're going to be looking at the Presence of God. And we will consider what Spence called "joining up the dots", do you remember that? Of each part of the Bible narrative. If you're watching with someone, then you could talk together, or if you're on your own, you can think through each point and see if it carries your judgment. Don't be afraid to text or email us. If you have any comments or if you want to ask anything, then just lift up the phone or email us or text us. We will look at each part of the Bible using a method called "Discover, Connect, and Apply". But I will let him explain how it works.
The guide will take you through three basic steps: Discover, Connect, and Apply. Now, discovery and connect go hand in hand, so you're going to do those together. And for the discover and connect components, you're going to be given a set of selected passages from the Bible. For each passage, you're going to discover the biblical theme through observing and analyzing the passage, and then you will look at how that passage connects to and develops the selected theme. The idea here is to see the theme developed as the story of the Bible develops. Then after you've gone through Discover and Connect for one passage, you'll move on, do that same exercise, Discover and Connect, for each of the remaining passages. This is going to help you identify patterns and see development of the theme. And the fruit is going to be great study and insight into God's Word. Alright, after Discover and Connect, you'll take some time to work through questions that will help you apply this theme to your life.
Hi everyone. So using the method of Discover, Connect, and Apply, our goal is to use these precious minutes together to help all of us as individuals bring the story of God alive. I hope you get the same sense of excitement when you hear Spence say that he hopes that the Bible will take a new place in our lives. And as we grip it more tightly and wear out the pages, I hope we are changed by its story, the way Spence was changed by its story. It's a big challenge, but Andrew and I hope you will find our time together useful. So let's dive right in and enjoy Session 2: The Presence of God.
Most religious systems are built around how we're supposed to interact with God: their commands to follow, ethical standards to live by, rituals to perform, and doctrines to adhere to. And many Christians operate this way. You know, the Bible sets the code of ethics and the doctrine, and their weekend worship is their ritual they perform. And the thought is, if we do these things, then we will appease God in heaven, and hopefully He'll give us good things in return. But that ritual-based religion, what it does is it uses God to get His blessings. And that misses the entire point of Christianity. The point of Christianity has always been to be in the presence of God Himself. You know, C.S. Lewis likened the blessings of God to kind of the warmth that comes from the rays of the sun. Though we can feel the warmth of the rays, we know that they're not the source of the heat. They are the effect of the presence of the hot sun in our solar system. See, it's easy for us to confuse the blessings of God that we can see and feel with the source itself. So the real question for us is, do we desire the blessings of God more than we desire God Himself? In this session, you're going to trace the theme of the Presence of God throughout Scripture. It's fascinating to me that God has made a point from the very beginning of Scripture to the very end, to always be with His people. Make sure to notice the different developments that His presence takes. You think in the garden, it's God walking with Adam and Eve. But then sin separates God and His people. So from that point on, there's this barrier between them of some kind. In the wilderness, God's in a pillar of smoke and a pillar of fire. And then there's a closed ark that cannot be touched. There's a tent and a temple curtain separating God and man. God was always separated from His people because His holiness would consume them. That is, until Jesus, who came as God in human form, God walking again among people, symbolizing even by His existence that He was breaking down the barriers that had separated people from God. Then God's Spirit comes and dwells in every Christian according to the New Testament. And finally, His presence comes again with His people in the new heavens and the new earth. It's remarkable, from beginning to end, God wants to be with us. So as you discover each passage, spend some time considering its implications for God being with us.
From the beginning of time, God wants to be with us. The whole point of Christianity has always been to be in the presence of God Himself. Wasn't it interesting that Spence outlined how many religions focus on rules to follow and doctrines to adhere to? But the good news for us is that Christianity focuses on our relationship with God Himself.
I love the phrase that Spence used when he said, "From the first page of Scripture to the last, God reveals a desire to be present with His people." So let's get started and join up the dots that will trace the theme of the Presence of God with His people throughout the Scriptures.
Genesis, Chapter 3 and Verse 8 reads, "God walking with His people in the garden." We are back at the very beginning of the Bible. This verse 8 of Genesis, Chapter 3, is so crucial to the whole cycle of our faith. Yet we could very easily miss a particularly important part of it. Let me read it to you. Genesis, Chapter 3 and Verse 8 reads, "And they heard the voice of the Lord God walking in the garden in the cool of the day; and Adam and his wife hid themselves from the presence of the Lord God amongst the trees of the garden."
Genesis 3 tells us a beautiful story of paradise that is lost by the wolferness of human sin. Humanity was originally given every perfect thing they could ever need or want, and virtually no restrictions. Yet despite that, Adam and Eve needed only a little bit of prompting to disobey their Creator. I think we've all been in that situation, haven't we? For Adam and Eve, they were immediately overcome by shame. And the painful story of human history begins with their exit from the Garden of Eden. And then the dots begin to join up. The implication of this verse is that God would have regularly come to the garden to spend time with Adam and Eve. How wonderful must that have been? It's impossible to know exactly what they would have been like. The passage raises many interpretations. How does God walk? What form does He take? Some say He walked as the pre-incarnate Jesus. But what's really important is that He was with His people.
We are really missing our grandchildren now. And maybe that's just a little bit of what it was like. The greatest consequences of their failings were the loss of face-to-face moments with their Creator.
Instead of enjoying the presence, suddenly all changed. And Adam and Eve's next instinct was to hide from Him. Sin always separates us from God. Having set out in paradise, they now face a life absence from the one who loves them. And that cannot be good. For a few moments, Andrew and I would like you to consider how wonderful it must have been to walk with God in the garden. As you look at these pictures and see what Eden might just have been like, think how it would have been had you been walking with God by your side.
That's a wonderful thought, isn't it? Walking in the garden with God. However, expelled from the garden, God's people found there was now a permanent barrier between them and God, even though He was still their God. We are going to look now into the book of Exodus and Leviticus to help us understand this barrier. In Exodus, we will look at Chapters 25 and 26, and Leviticus, one verse from Chapter 16. Let us listen to an extract from Exodus first.
Then have them make a sanctuary for me, and I will dwell among them. Make this tabernacle and all its furnishings exactly like the pattern I will show you. Have them make a chest of acacia wood, two and a half cubits long, a cubit and a half wide, and a cubit and a half high. Overlay it with pure gold, both inside and out, and make a gold molding around it. And thou shalt rear up the tabernacle according to the fashion thereof which was shoe'd thee in the mount. And thou shalt make a veil of blue and purple and scarlet, and fine twined linen of cunning work, with cherubim shall it be made. And thou shalt hang it upon four pillars of sheitim wood overlaid with gold; their hooks shall be of gold, upon the four sockets of silver.
These barriers took many forms. Through the wilderness, God was hidden from His people behind a pillar of smoke, by day, and by a pillar of fire by night. Then we come to this extract from Exodus, where God instructs the building of the Ark of the Covenant and the portable tabernacle that was to be set up each evening to hold the ark. Exodus 25 and 26 shows how there was always a barrier, whether it was a golden cover on a sealed ark or a purple curtain in the tabernacle. There was always something blocking between God and man. Sin creates barriers between us and between God, because we fear the holiness of God. And just like Adam and Eve, we want to hide when we sin.
And then we read in Leviticus, Chapter 16 and Verse 2, "The Lord said to Moses, 'Tell your brother Aaron that he is not to come whenever he chooses into the most holy place behind the curtain in front of the atonement cover on the ark, or else he will die; for I will appear in the cloud over the atonement cover.'"
It's really interesting, isn't it? Even the brother of God's chosen leader, Moses, Aaron the priest, cannot come into the presence of God. He is excluded from the Holy of Holies. All through the journey in the wilderness, there is distance between God and man. Whilst God cared for His people and provided for His people, He was always separated from them because of their sin and their fear that His holiness would consume them. We're going to take a quick tour through the wilderness tabernacle. You might want to have Exodus 25 and 26 open just to check out what you read there and how that's reflected in this short tour of how we believe the tabernacle actually looked in those days.
Now we turn to Chronicles and discover the dots are joining up. It's been over 500 years since Moses died, and we have come through the time of David and now King Solomon. David's son, finally built the first temple. Finally, there was a permanent place to worship and praise God. It's hard to imagine a religion with no churches. Let me read these first three verses for you. "When Solomon finished praying, fire came down from heaven and consumed the burnt offering and sacrifices; and the glory of the Lord filled the temple. The priests could not enter the temple of the Lord, because the glory of the Lord filled it. When all the Israelites saw the fire coming down and the glory of the Lord above the temple, they knelt on the pavement with their faces to the ground, and they worshipped and gave thanks to the Lord, saying, 'He is good; his love endures forever.'"
Isn't it an amazing incident? For centuries, people had feared God. Man was expelled from the garden. The tent tabernacle excluded everyone bar the high priest, and he was only allowed in on very special occasions. Anyone who broke those tight laws was killed. God was seen as aloof and an unapproachable Creator. But now, finally, 3,000 years since our first parents were ejected from the garden, we start to see a glimpse of how man's understanding of the relationship with God is beginning to change. After Solomon's prayer, there comes one of only a very few occasions when God signifies His acceptance of prayers to him. In the temple, He sends down the holy fire. That is the same for us. The surest evidence of God's acceptance of our prayers is the descent of His Holy Spirit upon us. And it goes further. As a further token that God accepted Solomon's prayer, the glory of the Lord filled the house. It became a living temple. It is like God is foretelling of a future when the separation and the barrier between us and Him might come down, and He will dwell with us. And for the first time in the Bible, we see God's people referring to Him as a merciful God or a forgiving God, and not, as we've heard before, a God of righteous judgment. "They bowed themselves with their faces to the ground and worshipped the Lord, saying, 'For He is good; for His mercy endureth forever.'"
Let us stop for a few moments and listen to some music, and consider how it must have felt for those believers in the time of Solomon, after centuries of fearing God, to discover their God was also a loving God. And what about when we discovered that for ourselves? Can you remember when you first realized that God loved you? Or even when you didn't love God? His love endures forever. Take a few minutes to remember that moment when you first realized that God loved you. Now we arrive at Ezekiel. And this story is all about the dry bones in the desert. It's 3,500 years since our first parents were thrown out of the garden. We have just read that 500 years earlier, Solomon and his people had a glimpse of God's desire for His people. But now in Ezekiel, it is not just a subtle hint. We can really make the connection, as he foretells, with certainty that God is planning a new relationship with Himself. We will be transformed from dry bones to full life and return to what was originally planned. Remember? Walking in the garden with God. Mind you, Ezekiel had a rough job ahead: ministering to people who had rejected God and then suffered the consequences. Is it not amazing then that even when God's people are rejecting Him at the same time, God is declaring His desire to bring us back into a close relationship with Him?
The exiled people of Judah were eager to blame God for their circumstances. It's not fair, they argue in Ezekiel 18:25. But Ezekiel told the people that they were at fault for their exile. Their faithlessness had provoked God to such a point of wrath that He caused them to be thrown out of their land. The people were getting what they deserved. But then God gave Ezekiel a new vision, a vision that God wanted them to come back, not just to the land, but back to Him, and He would restore their future. Ezekiel 37:27, "My dwelling place will be with them," God said. "I will be their God, and they will be my people." The dots are joining up. And all that God is asking is that His people believe. And for us, the message is just the same. We too can feel separated from God. His holiness is so great that we are sometimes afraid to believe Ezekiel's promise of dwelling with Him. It's sometimes hard to believe. But what if it really is true? What if?
They say you are an all-consuming fire, the Alpha and Omega, beginning and the end, good and forgiving, and living in your love that stretches from everlasting to everlasting. They say you give strength to the weary, increase the power of the weak, and bring the dead to life. You, Father, to the fatherless, home for the homeless. You, King of kings and Lord of lords, who created the cosmos without losing count of the hairs on my head, they say you are God. And when I think about you, God, I ask, what if all the things they say are true, God? What if the songs we sing are more than a metaphor? What if Bible verses are more than a cute Twitter bio? What if when we pray, we're not just talking to ourselves? What if it's all more real than our current definition of reality can contain? What if it's all true? What if you're gracious? What if you're good? What if you're not meant to be understood? What if you give peace? What if you have mercy? What if you're a well drawing life for the thirsty, humble, and fair? What if you care? What if you're here and we're unaware? What if you're holy? What if you know Me? What if it's true, Jesus Christ was your only Son? What if He's the One given for all to break down the wall? What if your call is for Me to be free and to see a new reality? What if you're the key? What if you're the way? Ancient of days, "else should die, I don't know." What if you are, I am? What if you are? What if you could change me? Let your love rearrange me from the sin that estranged me to a Savior who claimed me? And even though I can't see you, what if I need you? And I know you will just be you while I sit here and ask, what if?
Faith is a challenge for all of us, to believe what we cannot see is hard. But as we step into the New Testament, I hope you can see how that all that happened before this is connected and the dots are joining up. Man had the garden; it was ours forever. And man failed and was expelled from Eden. God was apart from us, behind clouds or curtains or walls. But all the time, God was planning and using His Old Testament messengers to prepare us. God wanted to renew the relationship with His creation. And here in the New Testament, we see the re-engagement with our God announced to all of us. Let me read extracts from John, Chapter 1. "He was in the world; and though the world was made through him, the world did not recognize him. He came to that which was his own; but his own did not receive him. Yet to all who did receive him, to those who believed in his name, he gave the right to become children of God, children born not of natural descent, nor of human decision, or a husband's will, but born of God. The word became flesh and made his dwelling among us. We have seen his glory, the glory of the one and only Son, who came from the Father, full of grace and truth."
God in Jesus came in human form and walked among us, His people. Finally, finally, after centuries of separation from God, as Jesus, God came and walked with and talked with and touched and healed us. The barrier that separated us from God was removed. Hundreds of years after Ezekiel died, his prophecy is realized. God's presence came to His people through Jesus Christ. Jesus had many names, but the one I like most is Emmanuel. It means "God with us." This promised new relationship is about a new life. Jesus is the source of this new life. In John 4, He offers us living water, another joining up of the dots. Did you notice the connection there with Ezekiel? If we do not drink this living water, we will become like the dry bones Ezekiel spoke about from his dream. I recently listened to a podcast while walking our son's dog, and the speaker said this: "Jesus did not come into the world to make bad people good; He came into the world to make dead people alive." Saved by grace, we become alive with Christ. The dots are joining up all over the place. Now they connect to Hebrews 10, where He tells us we become God's people, once again, living with Him. Unlike Aaron, who God said could not enter behind the curtain, we can, we did, we are allowed. Listen to Hebrews 10.
We have confidence to enter the most holy place by the blood of Jesus, by a new and living way opened for us through the curtain. That is, His body. and living way opened for us through the curtain, that is, his body. And since we have a great priest over the house of God, let us draw near to God with a sincere heart and with the full assurance. So we have it in black and white. Jesus has provided the gateway to make it possible for us to once again to walk with God." For a few moments, listen and read the promise made in Hebrews.
Lastly, we look to the final connection that links the fall from the garden to today. For a long period, man was separated from God, but slowly, God was working to bring man back into that close relationship where we walk with him. Moses and Aaron clung on to God despite the barriers. Solomon gave us hints of things improving. Ezekiel prophesied a promise from God, and Jesus came as God incarnate to bridge the gap and to remove the barriers. And for us in the 21st century, we can look to John fourteen to give us assurance for the future. Let's listen to these verses are presented to us in song.
This is our final promise and assurance. After rejection from the garden, the Ark of the Covenant and the tabernacle were outward symbols of his presence. The building of the temple was the first step to a restoration of the presence of God. And the life of Christ, first in the flesh, then in his church, gives us the absolute assurance that we can walk with God.
Listen, I hope as you trace this theme, the presence of God with us, that it leads you to worship our Lord and saviour, Jesus Christ, and it leads you to rest in his presence with you today.
I hope you've enjoyed tracing this theme of God being with us. But it's more than knowledge or interest. It's an opportunity to remind ourselves of just what God wants us to be, his people. I hope like Angela and I, you want to take this theme off the screen and into your lives. As we've read through these themes, I cannot help but want to put it into practice in my life. I hope you do too.
We are going to pray in a moment, and then after that, there will be some music, and two questions will appear on the screen. As you listen to the music, please think about the questions. If you want to share anything with us, please text or ring, and we can share it with the whole group next time. Thanks for listening, and now let us pray.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for our opportunity to share in your word, to look deeply into the message that you have embedded there for each one of us. Father, we give gratefulness to you this day that the barriers have been removed and that Jesus has made it possible for us to once again enter into that garden. Father, we thank you for walking with us, and we pray always that you will continue to walk with us in all that we do, in Jesus' name. Amen.